No problem. You need to show the participants on screen.
This is Aaron and it says it won't let me do video because the host has disabled it.
Working on that. Thanks, Aaron.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, right there.
Thank you. No, it's sounding very much like it's just me. I am the only one who's not seeing this picture.
Yeah, I've done a lot of work on that.
That's great.
I have to do that.
These are extra.
Oh, appreciate that.
Aaron, can you try and present again?
This is the $500,000 pilot.
How about that?
Yeah, right.
Nothing to get.
I mean, this is almost like sort of pilot S level.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Thanks. The City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee, April 25th, 2024, alternate date hybrid meeting is called to order at 1:11 PM. As a reminder, throughout the meeting, please announce your name before making comments. This is for accessibility to identify who's talking for people who are not using a screen. We'll begin with a roll call of COBAC members. I encourage each member to provide a self-description and I'll begin and then we'll go around the chambers for those who are here in person and then we'll move online. I am Carl Burnett, current chair. I use he/him pronouns. I'm here today in council chambers, wearing a blue collared shirt and a gray blazer, a green cap, and glasses and a beard. And next to me, I have John.
Hi, my name is John Halen, Vice Chair of COBAC. I am onsite today at the center of your screen, wearing a green flannel, a large white dude.
Hi, I'm Derek Pappauer. I am here in council chambers, short hair, just got a new haircut and a plaid from a brownish, long-sleeved shirt.
Looking sharp, Derek.
Thanks.
I'm Barb Campbell. I serve on the Bend City Council. I have salt and pepper hair that has grown past my shoulders now. Today, I am wearing the new favorite sweater I got at the thrift store last weekend. It is brightly colored with granny squares and I prefer she and her pronouns.
Thanks, Cassandra.
We'll just go online, Carl.
Oh, okay. Anybody online like to introduce themselves?
I'll go. This is Aaron Rivers. I use he/him pronouns. I'm attending online. I have salt and pepper hair and I'm wearing a black hoodie today.
I can go. This is Whitney Bennett. I use she/her pronouns. I am driving, so I'm going camera off. But if my photo is showing, I am a white female with light-colored hair that's past my shoulders. I can get a blue shirt on.
Thank you. Liz?
Liz Woodfin here. I go by she/her pronouns. I have blonde hair, blue eyes, and wearing a white shirt with a yellow scarf today.
Thank you. Would any non-committee members who are present like to introduce themselves?
Sure, Carl. Thank you. Cassandra Kehoe, I'm the Accessibility and Equity Manager. I am seated in city council chambers amongst members who are present today. I am a white-presenting Latina female and I am wearing a blazer. It is a hound's tooth, I believe, is the pattern. And I have a little turtleneck on and a gold necklace and long brown hair.
I am Andres Portela, pronoun T him. I am a black male with a curly black afro, wearing a blue sweater with a white line going through the middle.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, this is Ben Barry. I represent the Leadership Bend ADA Impact Project. I am a white male with messy brown hair and brown flag-colored shirt on and I have a mustache.
Thanks. Anyone else? You don't have to identify yourself, but here's your chance.
Can I ask a real quick question? Are we supposed to be talking into these things or into these? They're both work.
Great. Well, we'll move on to our land acknowledgement. Is there a volunteer to read that today?
Sure.
Thanks, John.
We would like to acknowledge that the beautiful land known as Bend, Oregon, north to the Columbia River, is the original homelands of the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. Confederated tribes ceded this land in the Treaty of 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wanalama, Warm Springs, Wasco, and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It is also important to note that the Klamat Trail ran north through this region to the great Salillo Falls Trading Grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It is our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
Thanks, John. This is Carl. My kid learned about Salillo Falls in school this year and they learned about the, about how that place was used and then what happened to it when they damped Columbia. So I'm glad that, glad the kids are learning that history. Yeah. We'll move on to the approval of the draft minutes from the past two COBAC meetings because we didn't get to approve the February minutes. So first of all, are there any corrections to the February 22nd, 2024 minutes that Lisa sent out? Hearing no corrections, is there a motion to approve the February minutes?
This is John. I have motioned to approve the February 22, 2024 minutes.
Thanks. Can I get a second?
Derek, I'll second.
Okay, a motion to approve the February 22nd, 2024 draft minutes. All in favor, raise your hand or say yes.
Yes.
So I see three or four hands. So the minutes are approved. I guess I'm supposed to say who specifically voted for it. So Whitney Bennett, see, John, myself. Derek. Liz. Great. So that those are approved. Onto the March 25th, 2024 draft minutes. Are there any corrections to those? And can I get a motion to approve this?
This is John. I motioned to approve the March meeting minutes for COBAC.
Derek, I'll second.
All in favor of approval? We've got Derek, John, Carl, Liz, and Whitney approving.
And Aaron.
And Aaron. Thanks. Great, the March minutes are approved. Okay, with that out of the way, let's move on to a Leadership Bend update. Bend today.
Hey, everybody. This is Ben. I don't have a ton to update on. We've provided a draft of the website that we're creating to the City of Bend. So Jacob Riggle is going to be putting together kind of the working draft that will actually function as a website. And then I believe that that will be reviewed by Cassandra and members of COBAC. We will receive the feedback for that and then make changes. So at this point, we're just waiting for the website, really. We do have, sorry, go ahead. Someone have thoughts there?
I don't think so.
Maybe just a blip in the audio. And then we kind of have two other portions to the project that are sort of still moving while we wait for the website. We have some testimonial or interviews that we're going to be carrying out in the near future to get some qualitative information about community members' experience in businesses or other public spaces, both good and bad. So Ben Haig, one of the members of our project team, is going to be collecting those. I think at this point, he's still kind of waiting to be connected with people. Cassandra, do you, you may actually have a little bit more insight into what's going on with that?
Well, thank you, Ben. This is Cassandra. Yep. Ben Haig has been connected with four community members and I believe that he's provided some information. I know that our current chair, Carl Burnett, is also providing feedback to Ben as well. Those are out there, but this would be a great time, Ben, if we just elaboratively incur to any COBAC member, I can send out those survey questions. It's very, it's pretty brief, Carl. I think you can attest to that. It's four questions, just asking about experiences from different perspectives of folks with disabilities, specifically in brick and mortar Bend businesses. So just as a reminder, probably a last call as Leadership Bend is looking to wrap up their testimonial section of this project. All COBAC members who can share the survey, take the survey, provide feedback or information, they're really not looking for quantity at this time. It's just quality responses for the testimonials that will appear in the website. And Ben, do you think that sums up kind of where we are with that?
Yes, I think that was a perfect description. Excellent. I have one other thing to give an update on. We're working on our outreach campaign. So we're working with the City of Bend, specifically with Cyrus Mooney, also Cascade Business News, and then the Bend Chamber to produce a kind of series of press releases to make sure that people know that the website exists so that they can use all of the good information on it. And that should be going out, I think, in about a month is when most of that information will be released. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have about what's going on.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. As Cassandra mentioned, I did receive from Ben Haig that list of four survey questions. I passed those on to some people that I know in the community and I think two of them responded to Ben. Do you know how those answers are going to be used specifically? Can you provide more light on that?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. We will be removing attribution and then maybe summarizing. I think generally, we're going to be using direct quotes as much as we can, but we just want to be able to give some color to people's experiences. Part of our approach with this is to provide useful information and then also provide a case for why people should care and maybe be making changes to the way that their business operates. So we have some statistics that I think help make that case relevant. You know, you're losing traffic into your business if you're not providing a certain amount of accommodation. And then also, these are specific experiences that people have had in a similar establishment. And this is maybe how you can, you can make some tweaks or just understand that, you know, you did X, Y, or Z and it made someone in our community feel a particular way, good or bad.
Cool. Makes sense. Other questions for Ben? Okay, well, yeah, keep us, keep us up to date on that. Thank you for the update, Ben.
Yep, happy to do it. I'll stick around probably with my camera and my mic turned off and if someone has questions or thinks of something later, if you want to throw them in the chat or anything like that, I'll try and be accessible.
Great. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you all. Bye.
We'll move on to the COBAC Strategic Plan subgroup updates. We have plenty of time for that, about 10 minutes per group. We can start with the Improving Transportation and Infrastructure group, which is the one that I'm leading, although recently I'd say Whitney has really taken the reins on that one. We've been pretty busy with planning of an event. And Whitney, would you mind talking about what we've got planned and I can kind of chime in as needed?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you can chime in with any details because I'm not, I'm not looking at our written-up specifics of it, but yeah.
Aaron, if you want, if it's easier, I'm happy to take the lead, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I don't mind starting, starting off and then I'll just pass the, pass the mic over. But what we have planned is it's going to be on May 16th and it's walk and roll tour. We're going to be meeting at the Miller's Landing Park and walking in kind of a guided walk style to El Sancho and Galveston. And the intent is it's kind of nicely been given a little bit more value in that we're going to use it as an opportunity to identify some of the limitations or barriers that we see in the sidewalk network and also highlight the Ben Works app and kind of highlight opportunities. Whoever's on walking with us will be able to, if we notice an area where there could be some attention given, we'll be able to point to what what services in place that might be able to help communicate that, whether it's, for example, the Ben Works app, how we would use that in certain scenarios. So Carl, if you want to add to that.
Great, thanks. So as Whitney mentioned, that's scheduled for Thursday, May 16th. I'd love to see all COBAC members in attendance if possible. That's going to be from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. So put that on your calendar. This is, we're going to start, as Whitney mentioned, at Miller's Landing and we'll be walking about a 0.7 mile route. We're hoping that that's long enough to be able to highlight a few different kinds of pedestrian infrastructure, paths, sidewalks, bridges, in good repair and not so good. And also short enough that we don't, that we're not totally exhausted by the end of it. And Cassandra has let us know that it sounds like we will be able to get some funding for some snacks and non-alcoholic beverages at the end of that at El Sancho, which would be great. And I don't, I can't imagine there's any reason why we couldn't buy some beers there as well to, right? There's no rules against that, Cassandra?
No, no rules of personal consumption and purchases of alcohol. It would just not be with city funds.
Fair enough. That's great. Let's see.
How'd you guys land on El Sancho?
Well, so originally, we wanted to go to Mothers, but we realized it was going to be closed by the time we got there. So it was just sort of in the right location where we wanted and we wanted to make sure to go by some patches of Galveston sidewalk that are not in such great condition as well as some kind of nice new sidewalk, as well as paved paths through parks. So is location. Anything else? Yeah, any, any feedback about that choice?
No, no, I was curious like this.
Yeah, right. There's so many places we could, we could go. The the blurb that I wrote says, "Join a group of people with different abilities and disabilities as we walk and roll along a 0.7 mile route. We'll be joined by Bend City Council member Barb Campbell." I think that still works for you, right?
That's right.
Okay, great. Together, we'll experience the patchwork of varied surfaces that make up Ben's pedestrian infrastructure. Afterwards, there'll be a chance to reflect on what we experienced and observed and discuss ways to make Ben's sidewalks and pedestrian paths better. I've got a detailed map of the route that we plan to do sometime in the next couple of weeks. I'm hoping to get out there and actually do the route myself and make sure that there's nothing unexpected along the way. I know Derek has already checked out some of it in person, the Galveston section at least. We have a proposed schedule. We're going to tell people to meet at 4:00 and we hope to actually get going around 4:15. We think it'll take about 30 minutes to do the route and then that'll give us about 45 minutes to sit and discuss and debrief and and have snacks. And then following that, one thing that we wanted to make sure to do is to get together again and reflect on kind of what we learned and what the next steps are so that this is resulting in some action being taken. We haven't scheduled that follow-up meeting yet. I think it should happen relatively soon after the event, but we don't have any particular deadlines either. So I think the next step for us right now is to schedule that follow-up meeting. And then we also need to start getting the word out about this event. So I would, I would love to encourage everyone to share the information about this with their networks or groups of people that they're part of. And I think we can share the Commute Options Walk and Roll website. Whitney, is that, is that right? Are we going to have info about this event on there?
Yeah, right now, there's kind of, there's the infos, the infos up there with a placeholder graphic and then we'll have some messaging material that Lisa Larson's going to kind of take a look at, make sure they're accessible and then we'll, we can circulate that however is recommended and we'll update even what we have on the commute options website, but it's, it's up there now.
I just found it. Thank you. So Cassandra, is there a good way for us to share this link? Would you, would you mind sharing it with the committee?
Absolutely, Carl. This is Cassandra. I have no problem doing that and happy to do that along the way. And also, when we get a little bit closer with that, Whitney's and Lisa has a chance to look at it. We can distribute it also to some community partners that you identify. Happy to do that. And I'd also encourage this particular group to seek any input or feedback from any other COBAC members, since this is a recommendation, not formalized at this point, but if anyone else has anything that they'd like to see or they want to edit the description, if they want to look at potentially different restaurant, anything now would be the time to open up that kind of conversation for the COBAC group as a whole.
Yeah, great point. Let's, let's take some time for that now. And any, any questions about the event or suggestions or ideas that people have?
What was the date again, please, Carl?
This is May 16th.
Thank you.
Chair, I could kick it off and add a component to this that we had talked about on our working group call. I think we're calling it a working group, right? Is that there's a bus stop right at Galveston and 13th. It's an ADA compliant bus stop. It's just very simple. CET is embarking on a bus stop improvement project kicking off this summer where we're going to be actually going out to the community and asking people what they want to see in terms of bus stops. This is part of the funds that the NPO has given us to do this work. So we're going to make, you know, I have an idea to kind of kick this off with, hey, what do you guys think of this bus stop? And, you know, does it need a bench? Should it have any other amenities? And so we can kind of tie in some transit connectivity, walkability to transit into this conversation. I think that would kind of round the event out. So that's kind of my idea that I'm hoping we can do a quick, quick tour of that stop and I can give a couple of updates on, you know, how we design them and and really just getting feedback from folks about what they'd like to see in the future for bus stops like this.
Yeah, this is Carl. I think we should be able to do that. Is that, is that a bus stop on the north or the south side?
It's on both sides of the street and it's right in front of the El Sancho. It's just.
It doesn't matter which one we.
It doesn't.
Okay. Great. Sounds good. I don't think we have any updates this month on our goal relating to accessible ground transportation. We've been pretty focused on this event and planning for that. Whitney, one thing I just noticed is that the link from the Commute Options website to the proposed route map on Google Maps isn't working. So that's something we, I might ask you to look into.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having struggling with mute. Yeah, I can look into it. See, see, I'm having trouble with that. I'll note that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions on that event?
Well, this is Cassandra. Sorry, Carl, for the interruption. I just wanted to note for our COBAC record that our member Nicholas Redan has signed on and is part of the group now.
Oh, great. Thanks. Welcome, Nick.
Yep, thank you, guys. Sorry I'm late for today's meeting.
No problem. Great. Well, I think that's about it for our group. We'll move on to, John, do you want to give an update on your group creating an accessible community?
Yeah, we don't really, we didn't meet between the last meeting and now. This is John Healan. But we did begin the process of reserving Miller's Landing Park for our get-together. As far as what that get-together looks like, we haven't really nailed down anything. There's always boiled hot dogs, but but we could also do donuts or something like that, something a little bit easier and not involving flames or induction stoves or anything.
If you can't grill?
You're not allowed to use open flame. So, yeah.
But hence the boiled hot dogs.
Yeah. You don't have to, you don't have to, you don't have to baby them. They just cook themselves, you know?
Donuts?
Donuts. I'm always looking for an excuse to drive up to Sisters to get donuts.
There you go.
So that, that's process is going through. Cassandra is taking over the lead of organizing that. Is that correct?
Insofar as the reservation.
And the site plan.
Yeah, I'll work closely, John, with you for the site plan, what that looks like. And if, if maybe that's another thing we could open it up to the group about, do we want to potentially invite some community partners to the event? Is it specifically and only primarily kind of the vision of this subgroup to be able to just have it as a COBAC awareness? Or do we feel like it's an opportunity and there's synergy for partnership for community just to talk about accessibility as we see it, both within the city and with partners?
Yeah, so that's all. That's all in the works.
Oh, John, would you like to share the date and some of the details of?
Oh, yeah. The date will be Friday, June. Is it the 13th? Hold on a second. It'll be June 14th. We have the space from 2:00 PM until 9:00 PM. The event, I'm guessing, will be more like 3:00 PM to 6:00 or 7:00 PM. That just gives us time to clean up and set up and do all the, all the things. It is the day before the Juneteenth weekend in Drake Park, so it's going to be a busy weekend. But I have talked to the people from the Fathers Group and us having a little small committee thing on Fridays and going to really bump into their schedules, so we're good to go ahead.
Okay. This is Carl. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how we can call it a barbecue if we don't have any, any hot dogs.
A donut-a-thon.
Maybe we can do some sort of potluck element to it. Have you thought about that? Like bringing, different people bringing dishes or something?
Yeah, I mean, I think that sounds great. We'll have to see what the insurance covers in case someone gets food poisoning.
This is Cassandra. I will look into that and to see if we have current city policy also that may preclude us from being able to do so, but we'll come up with something creative. It could be, like you said, John, something finger foods or easily, easily taking away and maybe alter the name away from barbecue to mixer or awareness building or something that we could, we could do, not to dash the dreams of the boiled hot dogs, because I know that is very dear to many of your hearts.
What's the time again?
It's going to be about 3:00 PM until 6:00 or 7:00 PM.
Could we do like, okay.
It's the 14th.
Wonder if we could do like ice cream or something?
So that's funny that you mention that because a week later, for my neighborhood. So that's funny that you mentioned that because a week later, uh, for my neighborhood association, this is why I'm so good at reserving parks now. I'm doing an ice cream social in my neighborhood.
Okay.
And I am buying a ton of ice cream through Cisco through my restaurant, so we can get a good deal and get Oregon ice cream. Um, so if you guys wanted to do free ice cream, we could do that too.
That sounds promising.
Yeah, I'm planning it out. Uh, we're gonna get like twenty-six gallons of ice cream to hand out for free, plus a topping station and everything, so. Or we could do cones, you know? Well, that's for the, this for the neighborhood association event, you know?
That sounds great, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's, let's, and, and may I encourage, um, this particular group, all, all subgroups would be great, but specifically just around the planning. Um, if we could meet, uh, early May, um, with, with members and myself, that would be great. And we can hammer out the details and start planning and ordering and doing all of the things, because it's almost May and then June will be upon us shortly after.
I will be the first to volunteer and I'm sorry, this is Bart Campbell, City Council. I will volunteer to scoop ice cream. And that might be a fun request for council is would counselors like to come to this event and scoop ice cream and do topping, you know, specifically that part, like, you know? So I'd be happy to do that.
Cool.
Great idea.
Well, I'm probably gonna send out an invite for the neighborhood association one too.
Okay.
Great. Um, well, let's move on to the third group. Um, do we have any updates from the Creating a Culture of Accessibility group?
Uh.
This is Liz. I don't think Amanda or Stephanie are, um, present today, um, but we had some follow-up conversation with Cassandra about um, some trauma-informed trainings and, um, I was trying to search my emails to find out what that follow-up was. Um, I thought that Amanda or Stephanie had um, gotten in contact with Trauma-Informed Oregon, um, but I'm not sure what the follow-through was on that, so, um, Cassandra, you, you might remember that, that email thread. Um, I just, I can't, I can't seem to access it right now.
Uh, this is Cassandra. No worries, Liz. Thank you. I had just proposed to the group because I know that, um, multiple members have been attempting to reach out to Trauma-Informed Oregon without great success. Um, and it may be that they're inundated with requests, um, right now and we're in a queue. Um, but for the sake of time and potentially opening it up to a broader scope, um, was thinking about the possibility of bystander intervention training, um, and a, a group that does that online. There's a lot of different types of very specific, uh, niche bystander intervention, including, um, for folks who are experiencing discrimination, uh, based on disability, how we can interject as, um, if it would be members of the city, if it'd be committee members, um, if we see that in public. So some kind of training with that, but I believe, um, that's all pending, uh, potentially Liz, that conversation that maybe Stephanie or Amanda have had successfully with, uh, Trauma-Informed Oregon. But something we can, um, we can continue to look into, so, yeah.
Great. Um, thanks for that update. Let's move on to the roundtable section of our meeting. Um, we have a chance for each member to share any meetings they attended. Information you might have learned that pertains to accessibility that you discovered over the past month. Uh, firsthand experiences you had about accessibility that you'd like, like to share, um, anything like that, um. John, would you, would you kick this off?
Yeah, uh, this is John. I had to look through my calendar because it's just to remind me what's been going on the last month.
Um, yeah.
So I'm on the committee for the core district. Um, I'm then on the core area advisory board. And we had a subcommittee meeting, uh, a couple of days ago where we talked about the grant process for businesses applying for facade improvements or business loans to fix an HVAC, for instance, or not loans, a grant. Um, and so a lot, you know, what I really would like to highlight is the city of Bend, uh, hired someone to be an interpreter to specifically reach out to Latino-owned, uh, businesses in the core area, of which there are quite a few, just to help them navigate, better navigate the, uh, the, uh, the application process, which can be pretty overwhelming, especially, um, if English isn't your native language. Um, and so I thought that was, that was pretty awesome. And it was, it was great to see that, you know, Colima Market got there, uh, facade improvement approved. And, um, I look forward to more businesses applying for the grant, um. You know, this year I think we have about a hundred thousand dollars in grant money. I think the year after that, it's probably gonna be nothing. So this is kind of like the last year that we'll be able to hand out grants for a little bit possibly. So, uh, yeah, I just really encourage people that own businesses in the core area um, to keep your eyes peeled and, uh, you know, um, definitely reach out to people on the advisory board if you need help knowing what resources to go to in order to apply. I think I'm gonna try and reach out to SCORE, which is a free business, um, nonprofit. It's like a, they kind of guide you through starting a business and everything and maybe getting them on board to help coach people through the application process, so. It's exciting. Anyway.
Thanks, John. Derek, you have any updates?
Um, not for things in the past, but I will, yeah, this is Derek. I will note to the committee that I'll be attending the, um, the APTA Conference, American Public Transportation Association, um, Sunday through Wednesday this week, and it's their annual mobility conference in Portland. And I will be bringing, bringing back some relevant information on like the transit and accessibility, um, any kind of other like technology projects that have an accessibility flavor to them. Um, I'm gonna bring a bunch of things back, so I can share that with the group at the next roundtable. Um, but yeah, it should be a fun conference, attending as the Oregon Transit Association President this year, so. Trying to make a lot of good connections there with other transit providers around the country and the world, actually.
Great, very thanks. Let's see, um, let's go online, um. Aaron, do you have any, any updates for the roundtable?
Um, I can't think of anything offhand, um, so I'd say no right now.
That's what Finn here. Um, we had, uh, breaking barriers, life beyond um, labels, uh, yesterday, the conference, and there were, um, several great sessions. Um, there was one that, uh, I thought would be really interesting, but I happened to be, um, working, uh, the full access table, so I wasn't able to attend, but, um, and a man named Dan Haig, uh, did, uh, travelability organ, tourism industry initiatives to improve accessibility, that I thought would have been really interesting to sit in. And I just wanted to, uh, throw that out as, um, maybe someone we could invite in the future to kind of um, see what they're doing, um, in our community. And then, um, April thirtieth was, uh, Sprout, um, Film Festival at the Tower Theater, um. And then upcoming is the Central Oregon Autism Walk and Festival. Um, it's in Redmond and that's on May eleventh at ten AM.
I'm sorry, Liz, can you say that last one one more time, that upcoming event?
Sure. Um, that's Central Oregon Autism Walk and Festival on May eleventh at ten AM, and that's in Redmond. If you want, I can send Cassandra the, the full address of where it's gonna be.
That would be great. Thank you, Liz. You can get that out to the whole list. The whole group. Great. Thanks, Liz. Um, let's go to Whitney. Do you have any updates for the roundtable?
I do not have any updates at this time. It's been just, uh, walk and roll tour planning, so nothing to add.
Okay, thanks. Um, how about Nick?
Uh, yeah, hi, this, uh, Nicola, Nick Braden here. Um, yeah, uh, so, um, I've been kind of busy, uh, changing jobs here, um, so. Uh, one of the things too that I've been working, I guess kind of working on is, uh, I'm volunteering for architects and schools where I teach local elementary students, um, about architecture and, uh, we're tying into the Oregon Trail, but, you know, some of the stuff we bring up is, you know, things like sustainability, accessibility, uh, things like that with our architecture. So that's kind of, it's kind of what I've been working on. So I'm doing a residency with, uh, High Lake Elementary right now. Um, and teaching three classes, so I go out there three times a week, um, to, uh, teach some about architecture. And so, um, you know, with the, with mindfulness of accessibility as well as we kind of get deeper into the residency. So that's kind of what I've been working on, uh, as well as just architecture in general and, you know, designing with, uh, accessibility in mind, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. Um, I guess, uh, I'll go next. Um, see, the only thing that I wanted to mention is that, organizers of the city event Bike Night have reached out to COBAC and also to Oregon Adaptive Sports about participating in an event, uh, the Bike Night event that they're hosting on May thirteenth. Maybe we need a whole, uh, calendar email to go out, Cassandra. Um, that's going to be a, uh, something happening out at the Grove in Northwest Crossing, um. There will be, let's see, the mayor will be there, um, there'll be a bike safety cone course. There'll be something about riding, learning to bike safely in roundabouts, um. There'll be something about the mobility hubs from CET, I think, and, uh, Oregon Adaptive Sports will also have a, a, a small presence there, um. I'll be there along with one other person from OAS, um, just to run a table and, and answer questions about what we do with adaptive cycling in the summer and we'll probably have an adaptive bike there that people can just look at and ask questions about. So if you're interested in cycling or, uh, adaptive cycling or intersection of those things, you may want to put that on the, on your calendar. It's the evening of May thirteenth, uh, from four thirty to six thirty at the group. Any updates from, um, others in, in the meeting or online, not necessarily any members?
Hey Carl, can I, um, get the dates and time of that event again? I just want to write that down.
Sure. Um, we'll have Cassandra send it out to everyone as well, but it's May thirteenth, which is a Monday, uh, from four thirty to six thirty at the group.
Thank you.
Okay, um, if there are no other updates, I will turn it over to Cassandra for our accessibility and equity manager update.
Thank you, Carl. This is Cassandra. Just have a few brief, um, points to touch on, and one of them we've already had a chance, uh, to discuss is just a reminder that in this next, um, few weeks, uh, you will receive information, uh, soliciting your feedback regarding the Leadership Bend website, um, in the rendition that it is. So we're looking for content and information, um, making sure that it, uh, is clear, clearly, um, uh, directed and kind of the, the, information that we want, uh, small businesses and local businesses to really be able to digest. So if you look at it from that perspective, that'd be fantastic. And a big, uh, very, very warm thank you, Ben and TJ and all of the, uh, Leadership Bend team. You've just been exceptionally incredible to work with. Um, and your advocacy and passion for accessibility is just, we're, we're so pleased to be able to partner and, and, and see the work that you all are doing. So please do keep a lookout for that. Uh, in addition to the very lengthy and long, apparently, uh, calendar of exciting events that are coming up, um, we are really gearing up with a lot of things. So I will send an email out with that as well. Um, I've got a slide up here, um, regarding community equity events, uh, that our, um, Equity and Inclusion Director Andres Portella has put together, and you will see this um, here. I will include all of these events as well, um, in addition to the, um, items that we've talked about. And if, uh, Liz, you want to share, um, those details and I will send, um, the bike event that's coming up as well. Uh, we'll just have a huge, um, exciting option for, for folks to engage with community in, in a variety of ways. The other update that I had, um, as I enjoy doing and bringing to, to folks' attention, um, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and specifically Saving Grace is discussing and having conversations around the intersection of sexual assault and disabilities. And this is a really, um, I think it, it sheds light on the importance and the critical nature of intersectionality as it pertains to different movements, right? When we're talking about, um, we're talking about disability justice movements and other movements, um, it, the, the synergy that comes together between different movements is, is critical. And I think that Saving Grace did a really nice job of this was particular from an Instagram post, um, in a campaign that they have going on, but just building awareness around some of the statistical um, uh, disparities that we see specific for folks who do have disabilities and the unique challenges that they face uh, regarding, uh, in-home care and rehab and medical staff and caretakers and support systems, um, that are, that are supposed to be in place to be able to care for folks, but are abusing those, those, um, you know, very important fiduciary duties that we see. And so, uh, Saving Grace is just bringing awareness to them. Um, and so I wanted to share that and just pass that along, since that is very pertinent to our Central Oregon community. And specifically, these statistics come from RAIN, um, and, uh, thirty-nine percent of female survivors have a disability. Twenty-four percent of male survivors have a disability, um, and the different ways that we can help prevent sexual assault on persons with disabilities is providing accessible resources, creating services that are geared towards self-advocacy and empowerment and inclusion of support services for assaults in caretaking rehabilitation programs. And you're talking about folks who are in very vulnerable situations and may not have those reporting functions or options. And so really being aware of what those potential, um, uh, uh, symptoms look like to be able to potentially help people. So just wanted to bring, bring light to that. And also, uh, mandatory trainings on signs, response and reporting for caretakers as well of when that's happening. Um, and, uh, appreciate the work that, that they're doing. Uh, and this just little blurb here is the Disability Rights and Justice Movement and the Reproductive Health Rights and Justice Movements must come together for nuanced discussions of the silent epidemic of sexual violence against disabled persons. Um, and here is information on the helpline, uh, specific to Saving Grace and a national helpline, um, for RAIN, which is the uh, rape, assault and incest national network and organization. So I wanted to pass this along and share this with everyone as it is pertinent to the month of April. Thank you, Carl.
Great. Thanks, Cassandra. If there's no objection, I'd like to switch around our numbers, uh, agenda numbers eight and nine on our, um, agenda. Um, and go next to Councilor Barb Campbell, um, to provide an update if you've got anything for us.
Thanks, Carl. Um, we have honestly a lot of things going on, um, in particular in the transportation realm. Um, sadly, we're starting to have to make some tough decisions around the GO bond. Um, projects are coming in at much higher costs than were imagined when we made the list of projects covered by that GO bond. And now we are just starting to see those, um, cost changes playing out and are just starting to have to consider where, you know, how are we gonna deliver what we promised? And, you know, are, are there other funds we can find? Um, the Hawthorne Bridge in particular is a project where, you know, it kind of seems to me like, wow, the spigots have turned on for that, which, you know, is fantastic. We were working hard to find grant money and we got it. But right now the question is, can we spend some of those funds on that entire Hawthorne corridor, for example? Um, instead of making an even fancier bridge, let's connect that bridge all the way to Juniper Brit, Brit, or Juniper Park, I'm sorry. Let's, and then on the other end, connect all the way to Drake Park. So we're examining those grant monies that we have gotten to see, you know, do we have to use them specifically on this bridge? Or can some of those funds be used on connection to the bridge? And maybe even And maybe even um, the bridge, honestly, um, it, it. Um, is going to have an impact on traffic flow. In particular, on the west side of the parkway. And those kinds of decisions all have accessibility um implications. Um, so, so that is kind of the larger picture. From city council from my perspective. And then the other thing I will say is I was able to attend. The Earth Day Festival this last weekend and encountered a booth. For Advent Chair. Um, whether or not you know about this. This was the first I'd heard about Advent Chair. And honestly, I'm really excited about this. This is a local activist named Jeff Bab. Who has been involved in inventing this thing. It is a, an all-terrain, human-powered wheelchair. That literally can be taken where a mountain bike can be taken. It is not propelled by the passenger. There's either someone pushing, an able-bodied person pushing or pulling. But nonetheless, it offer, offers that opportunity for folks to really go. On something like a mountain bike adventure, to be able to go to the beach. So in particular, uh, we'll mention that they have a more things for our calendar here, Cassandra. Um, they've got a film screening coming up at Open Space Event Studios. That's May twenty-eighth at five thirty. And that film is a lot about just the creation of this thing. And where it's been and what it can be used for. And they also mentioned, um, it's not on their website, yes, but they, yeah, that they mentioned to me. Events coming up where someone would have the opportunity to really use and experience one of these. So I just think it's a really exciting new product that has popped up. In the world of accessibility, maybe exciting in particular for us. Where we have so many people who are interested in connecting to the outdoors. Um, I really believe that, you know, something like this. Um, to be able to give people access versus how much money it takes. To actually make a path accessible. Um, you know, the cost of. These to give many people that opportunity. Versus a million dollars for a little bit of a path. Out by the river, you know, to me, this really is the way to improve access for a lot of folks, maybe. So anyway, I was really excited to hear that that exists. And that they are going to have events coming up where folks can go on an adventure in one of their chairs. Um. Other than that, um, I would say, has anyone got any questions?
I have a silly question. Uh, this is John. Um, for the bridge.
Yes.
Is there any foresight into possibly making it so you can cut out a section of the side of the bridge? So that you could access maybe like the second floor of the future city hall from the bridge. Cause you guys are, I think you own that property that the bridge is going right by. And that's supposedly where the new city hall might be going in in ten or fifteen, twenty years. But I was just thinking how cool it would be to bike across that bridge and be able to walk into the building instead of having to go to the end. And then circle around back, just saying.
One of the very first, maybe it was the very first kind of artist vision imagining what might be possible. Had exactly that, John. And it had, yes, this bridge is coming through or landing in. Um, you know, public space or or literally, like you said, right to the entrance of city hall. So I, from my perspective, absolutely, we really are thinking of that idea as well. Yeah.
This is Carl. Um, so you were alluding to um. GO bond projects that are. Now have higher price tags than what was planned on. Um, is the Hawthorne Bridge one of those? Are there other examples?
Um, no Hawthorne Bridge, I would not characterize this in there. Because we've been so effective with state and federal grant money. Um, but the other places we're seeing, in particular at this moment. Are regarding the, the larger bicycle network. And sections of that where we really are trying to get people separated. From traffic, genuinely separated. Or less than that is protected, where the bike lane is still in the street alongside. But there's some physical protection in between the bike lane. Those are the ones right now, Carl. Um, but just in general, these transportation projects. And I've heard this from ODOT as well. I mean, the amount is staggering. It's, it's something like thirty percent higher. Than expected, which, you know, I would hope that we were all. Of, you know, the, the smarter brains that be while putting that GO bond together. Were considering inflation. We knew it was going to be a decade. We were going to be delivering and we obviously knew inflation would come into play. But the inflation number is just so much higher than anyone has imagined. It's kind of scary, honestly.
Yeah, one thing that I keep remembering from one of my first MPO meetings was the talk of the cost of curb cuts. And about how before the pandemic, a curb cut would cost about. Twenty-eight thousand dollars. Now it's more closer to seventy thousand dollars. So. Costs are, costs are crazy.
I mean, right. I mean, just so far beyond, you know, what we would uh certainly normally be considering. As increasing cost inflation. This obviously happens year after year. But yes, this seems to be a before and after the pandemic change. And it is just orders of magnitude more that some of these projects are coming in. Yeah. Mostly right now, we are still in the mode of, well, this means we need to find even more grant money. To supplement these projects. Because the simple truth is, um. You know, maybe most of, and certainly a lot of them, including the Hawthorne Bridge in particular. They are requiring on funding from a number of different sources. There really aren't very many. Where it's only GO bond money that's going to go into the project. From my perspective, most of those maybe include GO bond funding. They might include CIP funding. They might include core area TIF, um, tax increment finance funding. And so that is what, uh, from my perspective is happening right now, Carl. Is not, we're not yet at the point where we're, where we're cutting out projects, saying we just can't afford something. We're trying to find more money, really, is what the effort is now, including hiring a grant person. Someone whose whole dedicated job is watching these grants, applying for grants. Continuing to bring money into the city.
Hey Barb, I have a quick question on the GO bond funding. Are those funds flexible enough to be able to? Utilize as a local match to leverage other grants? Or are they? Like, can you, I mean, they're city funds, right? So. Just, you know, being able to get more for the dollars. Or, or, I mean, I guess you could just use general funds for that as well, but I didn't, I just wasn't sure kind of on the. The uh characteristics of that funding, like if they're. Able to be used, you know, to try to match. Cause usually a federal grant's gonna have at least a ten percent match on it. And a lot of people these days are doing fifty percent matches in a really competitive grant. So you're, you know, you're putting up a lot of your local money. To be able to even be competitive for other grants. And at the end of the day, that ends up being a lot. So just a quick question on that.
That's a really good question, Derek, that I don't actually know the answer to. I know that in the GO bond list of projects. There were some that were listed as, for example, intersection improvements. And there was a whole list of intersections that we hope to improve, but no specific. No specification as to what the improvement might be in this place versus the other place. And when you saw things like that, that was a place where the money might shuffle. And we have this whole list that are getting improvements. But the one for this intersection, maybe now is more, so we might be considering a lesser treatment on a different intersection. I don't remember a category for local match. Um, that's a really good question, Derek, and I'm afraid the answer might be no. Um, you're absolutely right. Yes, local matches are a really big deal. You may remember that our previous president worked to honestly kind of reverse. It had been ten or twenty percent was the standard local match. Our previous president saw the opportunity to, for banks to make more money loaning to municipalities. And was literally trying to shift that balance over to where the match would be the eighty percent part. I don't believe that administration was entirely effective making that massive shift. But it is my perspective that, yeah, it really was kind of in that period of time. That that number did change from ten to twenty to, like you're saying, fifty. Or more percent people are putting out in order to be competitive. So I am afraid, Derek, that the answer to your question might be no. We would need to find that money. From our CIP funds, for example, maybe, just general funds. I think that. And I certainly, I can get a better answer for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh huh. That's something um we do with the, our MPO funds. Um, sometimes we're able to help with something like a local match. Um, as you know, our MPO does have a budget, a very, very small budget. But we always try to be effective with that money leveraging to get more. So.
Thanks, Barb.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to um. I guess the last item on our agenda, which is agenda setting for May. Um, our next meeting is going to be Thursday, May twenty-third. At one P M. Does anybody have any things they want to make sure that we get on the agenda for that one?
Sure, I, I had mentioned at the last meeting, this is Derek, about doing a little recap of any of the events. So if we can. Just keep a placeholder on that for maybe ten minutes or five.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, our, the walk and roll tour event will have already happened by then, so we'll, we'll do a recap on that. Um. You said that there's some CET stuff that you're, that you're gonna report on from uh the conference you're going to.
Potentially, I could table that for another, another one if we wanted to add more time on the agenda. I think the event is a little more. So I'll, I'll just bring some flyers and stack them out there. And if you guys want to take one, I'll look at it. But I don't need to get like a, a formal update on that.
Okay. Uh, Cassandra, anything you want to make sure that we get to in May?
Um, thanks, Carl. I think a recap of what's going to be happening would be great from the event standpoint. And we will have two city staff presentations. One was uh tabled from today uh to May, but we'll have two city staff. Uh, members coming to present um regarding um impediments to fair housing, specifically around folks with disabilities. And then also, um, I believe that David Abis will be joining us to discuss the accessibility um transportation fund. And where our funding goes and kind of the process that um him and I and so many of the city of uh Bend staff. Go through and identifying their removal requests, opportunities for uh making city uh infrastructure and um. And all of the transit more accessible for folks. So, um, yep, we're gonna have two, two presentations there, but we will have time, I think, for a nice recap of, of what COBAC members. Have been doing and how the um, the walk and roll event went as well.
Carl, may I? Um, we have, so we have a multiple unit. Property tax exemption. Um, which is for housing in order to create housing. And it's a program where the developer of the housing would be eligible. For property tax exemption on the new improvements that are housing. For a period of ten years. So we received four applications for that program. And we have paused the program. We're not taking any more applications right now. And that is largely because we are considering changing the requirements. So right now, you're eligible for the program if you, we have a whole list of things that you might do that are public benefits. And if you're doing three of those things, you're eligible for the program. And that, from my perspective, is largely why we have paused it. To look at that list, to see if we still like the list. Or if we want to maybe require something that you're just straight up required to do in order to be eligible. Or to add things to that list of options to be eligible, eligible, right? So the way the list goes is choose three out of the five. And we might end up with three out of seven. We have more options. And so the reason I bring it up is maybe one of those options has to do with accessibility. Maybe they um are eligible if they're creating a certain number of fully accessible apartments. In the project. Um, that, from, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, that's exactly the kind of thing we're thinking about right now. Right now, we don't require um deed-restricted affordable housing, for example. And I think that is very much on our minds, is maybe in the next round, we would require that. So there's something um this committee might want to think about. Is would we want to recommend that, yeah, on this list of possible public benefits is. Your, you know, some percentage are fully accessible units.
Is, uh, this is John. Is Mufti also changing so that if you hit certain checkpoints, it's automatically approved? Or are we still gonna make people grovel in front of every taxing district?
Um, they have to grovel in front of every taxing district, no what, no matter what. Yeah? No, no, because, I'm sorry, because they, they've already done the grovelling for the program. And every taxing ti- district had said, has said yes to the program. And then, John, you're exactly right. For ourselves, we have another level of grovelling where they have to come to city council. For that final approval. That's not how they run the program in Portland, for example. In Portland, council makes that list that I was describing. Council decides what all the qualificate, you know, what you have to do. And then, as long as you're doing it. It is a staff review that figures out if you have met those requirements. And if you have, you get the exemption. That's how they run it in Portland. One of our applications, there was honestly some confusion expressed by the developer. Because they had used the program in Portland and thought we were running ours the same. So, John, yes, that is something else we are considering.
Good.
Thanks, Barb. We'll um.
Carl, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did you see that Nicholas has his hand up?
Yeah, uh, yeah, this is Nicholas. Uh, uh, Barb, I would love to be part of that since I design a lot of multifamily housing. And I've uh worked with developers in the past on that. I'd love to be part of that from an accessibility standpoint and design.
All right. Great. Thank you, Nick.
Yeah, thank you.
Stephanie and Cassandra, who are nodding like, yes, we will bring this to this group as a discussion. Maybe this group wants to make that specific recommendation council, honestly.
I, I guess I have a question. This is Carl. If, if there's a list of seven things that you. And they only have to check three of the boxes, who, what incentive would there be for someone to? Um, build accessible housing units, um, if the other options are cheaper, let's say.
Well, you know, that's exactly the thing. Um. Carl, uh, as far as I know, all of the things on the list are things that it, that a developer might choose to do. But wouldn't normally pick because they're more expensive. That's exactly right. And that is why we would make it a condition for getting the exemption. One of those possible. One of those possible conditions for the exemption. Did that answer, you said?
Yeah, I mean, I think I understand. Um, so Cassandra, what do we think about getting um? Something around this on our agenda for discussion next month? Does that make sense?
Um, yeah, depending on what we have for the two city staff presentations, Carl, sorry, this is Cassandra. I will also collaborate with Andres and then Stephanie to see who would be best uh to bring, to present it, to give COBAC time to the, to contemplate. And provide some feedback and insight, but it would be, uh, I'm sure we could make time for that in the next couple of months, dependent on those staff member schedules.
Thanks. And what is, uh, um, Barbara, there any time constraints that you're aware of on that?
I thought we were thinking about that this summer later. Yeah, I think we've, we've got at least a couple of months.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks for bringing that up. I think this is bringing us right up to the end of the meeting, but I do have a quick breaking news announcement. Yeah, an email that that a few of us just received um from Rachel Colton at Ben Parks in Iraq. Just a quick update to let you know that yesterday, the OSMB board, does anyone know what that stands for? Anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Approved our thirty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar grant request to fund improvements at access point number one, boardwalk at Miller's Landing. Exclamation points. This grant is contingent upon a route reallocation of waterway access grant funds to this funding cycle. But OSMB staff seems pretty confident that this will happen. We so appreciate y'all's continued support of this project to improve access and habitat. We're hoping to break ground later this year slash early twenty twenty-five and be done summer twenty twenty-five. Please let us know if you have any questions and thanks again. So that, that's some, some great news about uh. The potential um accessible boat slash kayak launch at Miller's Landing.
That's the Oregon State Marine Board.
Ah, thank you.
Fantastic. Could I say one more thing? I forgot. So, uh, the uh, the Drake Park Footbridge. Um, city event has a pot of transient room tax. Which had been reserved. We challenged what we could use the money for and frankly, lost that specific challenge. But we were saving the money, knowing that if we lost, we'd have to spend, right? So that money exists and we have been exploring ideas for improving. The Brooks um alley promenade, making improvements to make that alley promenade safer. For pedestrians in particular. I have, quite frankly, been a squeaky wheel about the Drake Park Footbridge. The Drake Park Footbridge, I think everybody on this committee knows, is deteriorating, has deteriorated. To the point where it is honestly difficult to roll across that thing if you are using a walker or a chair. And we are obligated to fix that bridge versus improvements to Brooks. Which I think we're all, you know, excited and happy about, but there's no requirement to make those improvements. So as this weekly wheel, I have been continually advocating that some of those funds be for that footbridge. And last I heard, yes, that is now how we are describing those funds. As we are exploring the Brooks promenade as well as the Drake Park Footbridge. Improvements and from what I hear, it's sounding a little like we might have moved that up a little bit. So, you know, a year ago, they were telling me it's just gonna be years until we do this. Maybe it even had to do with waterways. And now what I'm hearing is no, we want to get a bridge that we can just bring in and sit down. Don't touch the water, don't, you know, do that kind of a level. But it does, from my perspective, I am feeling better about that being more of a sure thing. Those improvements coming sooner rather than later. So I just wanted to let you know.
That's great news. Thanks for that update. All right, um, before we adjourn, is there any other COBAC business?
Chair, can I ask a question about um? Like welcoming week, I, do we typically do that? And maybe Andres, you might have some info. I know we did an event last week. But just for future agenda topics, um, kind of getting a timeline on when that typically happens. And when the city's gonna be pushing out info on like events and collaboration, I I feel like it used to be in like August or September. Julian now.
This is Andres Portel, Equity and Inclusion Director of Portland, T H M. So, so, so we actually began that process early January. We probably, I probably should have come and give a presentation. Information with y'all about welcoming week. There's gonna be a press release coming out in, I think around May fourteen, May twenty-fifth. Announcing that we're gonna launch the funding for that and picking applications for welcoming week, uh, which is gonna be the week of September fourteen.
September fourteenth, okay, great.
And so when you say you've started that process, you mean the process of planning for welcoming weekend?
So, let me be very specific about that, I'm sorry. Uh, so. In February, we had an initial conversation with the community groups who traditionally have applied for welcoming week funding. In that conversation, we got them all in the room and said, uh, what does welcoming week look like in the current context of the themes we have? And uh, I think the theme this year is we're all in. Um, in that theme, uh, we started to partner, um, some of the folks in the room and 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 start to vision what it would look like to do some shared events. And so when I say we got folks together, that's, that's, that was our kickoff. Um, there will be another meeting next month, which I will uh go ahead and share in our, in our um email back to the group.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other business? Any other, other business? Our next COBAC meeting will be, uh, it still says next year. That's not right. Next month. Thursday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, from one to two thirty P M. With no further business, City of Band Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting for April twenty-fifth. Uh, is adjourned at two twenty-seven P M. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye, guys.